Okay, I've got 8:30. So Bill, I guess, oh, here's John Wall too. Okay. Anytime you guys want to start.
Okay. One of the things I'd like to focus on is because we've got, you know, we have a lot of subjects that we often cover, but we've got so much discussion about money on big projects that I think we should focus on on the paving project and Stop 24 and maybe some of the, and Stop 21 and 23, even I know we don't have any fixed numbers and then, and then maybe just the tax receipts and Pete asked for some detail and part of that is, we can, we can talk about that at least. But first of all, the, I didn't even get to send it out to everybody, but I received the purchase order from the InDOT people for the CCMG funds. So they announced that within the next three to four weeks, we will be getting $797,000 and change for, for the, for the project. And so if you do the math, we have to come up with one third of that to make the 75, 25. So we've got to come up with about 200, just under $270,000 and then, and then, and then an additional 40, $50,000 for engineering, management costs. So we're, we're, we've got to look at about 320,000, maybe 330,000 dollars that we, we have that, we have that money and we have it budgeted. But we're, you know, that's, that's, that's a big chunk that we're going to have to, that we're going to have to consider. I don't think there's anything that we have to do right now, but that then affects what we do for Stop, for Stop 24. And I don't know if Nick is here or not.
Don't think so.
Okay, the Stop 24 project, you know, the bids came in and apparently the low bidder was Gary Up out of Gary, Indiana. And they were, they bid $243,000. And there were several options. There was, there was an A1 option, an A2 option, B, C, and D. And the question I have is, we, we, we took, if we take the bid and take away the A1 option, or A2 option rather, that puts the bid about $220,000. The, you know, and then Global says, but their estimate, I know John Wall thinks it could be done for less, but I think right now I would rather assume that we're, we're dealing with 220, 240,000 dollars for the project. If we do better, that's super. But I keep, I keep going away. And anyway, that's, and so that one is something we, I would like somebody to tell me whether the option, if we take away the A2 option, we're, we're left with something that apparently is acceptable, but I guess I need to know, I'm more interested in the money side, but the functionality and everything else of this plastic walkways and everything else, which apparently according to Global can be picked up and, you know, and stored over the wintertime. And I don't know if anybody knows anything about that. Do you know anything about that, John Wall? You're not, you're on.
It's a product that Michigan City is using to get over their dunes right now in the parks. So it was suggested as a substitution by one of the bidders and we put it in as a, an option. And that's what the alternate stated. So that was something for us to consider. Yeah.
Sorry, the point, yeah, the point being that if we, you know, I mean, if I, you know, my choice would be to choose the cheapest option, but that, I mean, if it turns out to be, we're, we're choosing an option just to save money and it's not functional, that's not the best alternative for my point of view.
Right. And that's something we can investigate between now and the time we award the job. We can take a walk down there and take a look at Michigan City's, they've got it in place, a couple of places down there. We originally talked about a couple of different alternates anyway, in the favor of cost. So, you know, it's just, you're still going to get your deck down low, you're still going to get your grading, which is the major portion and some of the other things that we, you know, that were part of the project in the beginning. So.
Well, the other pieces that I want to talk about on that project, because one of the things that we were going to have a meeting on Monday on is there's a B and a C and a D. Now, for whatever reason, Gary Up, option B, one of the much higher bidders was $11,000. Gary Up was $33,000. And the explanation I got from Jeff Altman was that this was just kind of, I'm being a tad facetious, but just going around with a, you know, a kitchen bag and picking up the loose things, not digging in the dirt, not doing anything. And $33,000 obviously is too much money for.
Well, you can't, you can't really judge those numbers by that kind of logic, Bill. It depends on the bidder's frame of mind and what his crews can do. What, what Nick was suggesting was that work could be done by, so what you've got is a, when you bid these kinds of jobs, you're bidding with union contractors based on the type of bidding process that we have and the funding sources. When you, you could do that work with non-union and/or volunteer work for considerably less money than what Gary Up is proposing. So that's why we did it as an alternate, so we could pull it out and decide whether we could do some site restoration work later on with, with cheaper alternatives as far as contractors and/or volunteer labor.
I get it, but my, my concern is just that if, you know, if we, if we say, let's spend 240,000 or let's, let's agree to go to the bank and see whether we can get money. Pete sent me something yesterday. I don't speak for Pete, but he, you know, but the question is really if we do something, I think we need to figure out a way to spread this over several years with some kind of bank financing. And, but I guess if we, if we're going to choose the $240,000 expenditure, you know, I don't want to end up with, because I'm happy with 240,000, but the thing looks, you know, it is, it's, it's just an eyesore for the, for the residents because we're, we haven't, we haven't cleaned up the site at all. So.
Because the 240,000, that 100,000, we're up for 100,000 grant, right, John?
Yes.
Okay. So we need 140,000 to cover that. Going back to the CCD stuff and the, and the Community Crossing Grant. We had originally budgeted 250,000 in the, in the CCD paving fund. We've already spent 57,000 of that. So we've got about 190,000 left. We do have 25, where's that? 25,000 from, oh, well, do we have any more fire station upgrade coming? We spent, we had 80,000 budgeted and we spent 45. Do we have anything coming?
You didn't, timeout, you didn't spend a nickel on the fire department, Pete. Those dollars went for the shore protection is what I understand. Is that correct, Bill?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's right, John. I mean, I, you know, you know, we have to spend, we have to find the money somewhere to do the shore protection. But the question I think Pete is asking is, can we use, we're not, we don't have any expenses that we've got for 2020 on the, on the fire station. We got to figure out what we're going to do, but that's, that's a 2021 project. Is that right, John?
Well, we, yeah, we're in the process of getting another set of numbers for the second design build quote. And there's actually a more detailed process now that I've been, I've been made aware of by this new bidder, who's Larson Daniels, and they're the ones that did the town hall project. So I've educated myself a little better about what we need to do. It's almost a bid process for design build. So we're going to have a little more extended process. We will not be spending any money in 2020. And more than likely, if we can get, you know, everybody on board, we can maybe do something in 2021 as far as pushing it forward. Your expenditures will be at the point is where the construction actually happens. So it may be late in 2021, you know, at the best case.
Do we have, do we have any more outstanding invoices for, as it sits right now, for the shore protection?
No.
Okay. So, so basically in, basically in CCD, I'm just taking a rough guess here. We've got about budgeted monies, we got about, what, 25,000 that was, we originally budgeted for fire station upgrade. I know a portion of that was used for something, but we've got 25,000 left. We've got 75, we've got 190,000 in the paving and we've got 25,000 for the ADA beach stop that we're not going to do. So somewhere in there, we've got about, let's say, about 240, 250,000 in CCD that we can apply to the crossing grant. But so we still have to come up with something.
Yeah, we, we, we have money and, and, you know, I don't want to raid everything, but everybody has agreed that getting a million dollars worth of paving for 300,000 dollars makes plenty of sense. And so we can, there is money in, in Riverboat that's, that's untapped. And I, you know, granted, I mean, the Riverboat is reduced and it's going to continue to be reduced until we get out of the pandemic. There is also some paving money in, there's also some money in, and we're talking about 20,000 here and 20,000 there, but we've, there's got money in local road and street and in MVH that is also untouched. And so that could be, that could be due, that could be used also. So.
Okay. So it looks like.
Leave us with a lot of fluff for, for things like Stop 21 and Stop 23 and Stop 24.
Right.
You know, before we. The other thing that from a cash flow point of, yeah, from a cash flow point of view, I was under the impression, now Nick said something different at the council meeting, but I was under the impression that we had to spend the money, the 240,000, and then we could get the 100,000 dollars, you know, after the fact. So it doesn't mean that it's, you know, that the 240,000 dollar project is going to cost, if it's 240, is going to cost more than 140. But we may have to come up with cash, pay the vendors and everything else before we get any recompense from, from coastal grants. So.
Just to rain on, rain on the parade here, guys. I got a text yesterday from Larry. And he, this was at five yesterday afternoon. He met with Bruce Woodruff. To be safe, he would plug in 700 to 800,000 for shore protectionist 23, 21, and Stop 21, 21 Club. He expects the cost will be 500 to 600,000, but would rather be safe for budget purposes, purposes for the town. So, yeah, before we get too deep in the weeds with all the money we have, we have a lot less.
Is that, does that include 29, Bob?
No. No. And 29, we're hoping that the homeowners who live on either side of that stop are going to see the wisdom of protecting that stop and help the town, to what extent, I don't know, in protecting that. Cause that's part of what they want to do down there. If, if, if they protect their property and Stop 29 is protected, they have no protection. But those are the numbers for 23 and 21.
Okay. So just for, just for yucks here, basically for Stop 24, we, we need a total of about 245,000 dollars. Right, Bill?
Yes.
Does that include the money for Save the Dunes and for Global?
Yes.
Okay. And then for the Community Crossing Grant stuff, we need a total of about 300 and 330, let's say.
Yeah.
Run that, run that one one more time. I'm a little confused. How much was the engineering, Bill?
Yes.
How much was the engineering?
Yeah, the managing the project. I mean, engineer, I mean, yeah.
Forty to 50.
Forty to 50,000 is what I'm.
Now, this is for the crossing grant, right?
Yes, the crossing grant. That's right.
Is that about we spent last year? Last year we spent?
Not, no. It was, it was a significant amount. I, I don't have it at my fingertips because I'm sitting.
Okay. I think it was 91,000.
Yeah.
In engineering? Sorry, Pete.
The, the one area that I'm, I'm really struggling with, and I guess I have to talk to the bank and to the Indiana Bond Bank and what have you, is I don't know what kind of loans that we can get for, for remediation of stops. I just don't know what, you know, my municipal skills are not that great because I don't know, you know, get loans for buildings like the fire station and everything else, but I'm not sure what kind of, what kind of terms that you would be able to get for, for that six, seven, or 500, whatever, $500,000 for 21 and 23. And I guess that's my job this week is to find out what, what we, you know, how much, how much we can, we can actually, how long we can stretch that expense. Have you got any ideas, John Wall? And I mean.
Well, when we, when we were set about trying to see how much the fire department would cost on an annual basis, Horizon Bank was quoting a relatively inexpensive rate for us. And we were going out 20 years just as a matter of convention. I'm not sure how far they go with the kind of projects we're talking about, but I think probably 20 years is a reasonable assumption.
Okay. Well, yeah, I mean, it's easy for them to, I mean, you know, the difference is they see a building that they, they can repossess, I guess, whereas the, whereas the, I don't know how you repossess boulders, but, you know, in any event, that's, you know, but maybe, you know, since we're a solid customer that, that we can get 20-year financing. But I think we're going to need something like that to, to cover a $700,000 nut. I mean, 20 times 35,000 plus interest, you know, brings us to 50 or 60,000 dollars a year for 20 years for, for that remediation. And it's all money. And, you know, we do, we do have resources, but it's starting to, is there, I'm just kind of curious now, what's, what's the consensus on Stop 24? I mean, we got at some point in time.
Can I, can I bring up one thing, Bill? If we're just following Pete's logic, if we're talking about Stop 24 at 245,000, and we're talking, talking about 21 and 23 for the coastal remediation at 800,000, and we're talking about community grant at 400,000, we're talking about a 1.4 in total. Let's say we tried to do it all. If you took 1.4 and you, and you ran that at about, I don't know, 5%, and I know there's compounding. You know, you'd say you're talking about 1, 1.6 or something in total over the duration. You'd have to run this math and refine it a little bit, divide it by 20. I mean, you're talking about 80 grand a year roughly. So that's, I think, if we're thinking about whether we can afford any of these things, I think, I don't know. I mean, I don't, what the history's been with the town and capital improvements and how much you borrow and that sort of thing. But it does, you know, something.
We, we pretty much, if I look at history, we pretty much have paid our way without any major expenditures. I mean, I think we've even bought cars in the past for, you know, we just spent the 35, 40,000 dollars for a police car and be done with it. But we're, you know, we're in a different situation now. So.
Well, we also though, when it came to infrastructure, like the water, we, we decided to bond some, I know we bonded that project. And I know we didn't, how did we finance the town center? That was that, I was assuming that was a.
Yeah, that's about, I was, that was a Harbor Trust special. We were, yeah, we were paying for it over, I think from, from, from the beginning, I think it turned out that we paid it off in 2016, if I recall. So.
So there is some history for some borrowing when we think we.
Yeah, yeah. Except the difference is that they're, they're staying, I think we're going to have to have a slightly different procedure with the, with the, with the borrowing here. Cause I think you researched it, John, and the bond, the cost of, of, you know, that, to them, a 1.6 million dollar bond is so trivial that it's not worthy.
Yeah, that's essentially what they told us when we approached them about a roughly million dollar fire station addition. Not that that was going to be the ultimate number, but they said it was not worth bonding. The cost of the bank were significantly higher than just a regular loan.
Okay. I, I think this requires a, a little sit down to go through our budget numbers and our expenditures to date and see where we, what, what we've got. I've been able to identify a few things that, that we, we have not spent. We went through this exercise in May identifying the things that we thought were, we could cut. At that time, we did not, we're not aware of the, it's 700, 800,000. So I think we need to sit down. There has to be, there has to be a very tight control on expenses for the rest of this year. And then we can identify what we have to go with. And one of the, one of the things we might think about is, and John, maybe you can check with Larry on this, is can we wait another year for 21 and 23 with the temporary stuff in place as it is? Do we have to repair those now? I don't know. It's just a question.
My, my understanding is, is this really can't wait. If we have, we have storms like we did last winter, we could lose Lake Shore Drive. So I, I think we absolutely have to do that.
Okay. Do we?
Let me interject, Pete. You, you could put more temporary stuff down there. The problem is ultimately you'd spend another six figures to do that. And the success rate, as Bob's saying, may be not so good. And you also have to pull that out of there eventually when you do permanent work, which would be significant cost.
Bob, are you aware, have you had any feedback or anything on Ogden Dunes? And I know they were trying to get some monies from somebody to help their protection. Do we have any opportunity to do that?
I've not heard of any. I think the state is pretty strapped with all the COVID expenses. So I think this would be a tough time for us to be getting money from them. I can talk to Ogden Dunes and see what I can find out, what, if they've had any success. Although, of course, we'd be their competitor if we're asking for the same, same monies. But yeah, I've not heard of anything. I can check on it though.
I'm pretty sure Beverly Shores did some kind of a bond for their second wave of shoreline protection.
Yeah.
Well, isn't Beverly Shores all national?
No. They had to cough up their own money to make that work.
Okay. But, but we still need, I think we should sit down and go through the, the budgeted items line by line. Bill provided the expenses to date. So, and, and we know what, what is, we can then determine by the budget sheets you provided, what we can expect or find whole areas that we can scrounge up some money for this. We're not going to come up with 700 or 800,000, but we can, I'm sure we can find an additional 200,000.
I agree. The, the one thing that I think I might have, you know, sent some things to Pete and Bob LaMae, but I don't know whether everybody got it. We, if you recall, I sent out something before. I was kind of pleased with the fact that we got 90.2% of, of 2019's June receipts from the tax, when I looked at our tax receipts coming in, in June of 2020. But I did ask people to step up and see if they would pay, if they could afford it, if they would pay their taxes in full for the year. And I did hear from a few people telling me that they had not normally done that and have done that. Now I'm in a little bit panicked because I don't know whether we're going to, whether that, that 90.2% is not going to be replicated in December because we've already got the money. Cause the way it works is that if they get, if they get a check for a hundred dollars, you know, our share is about 20. So they pocket the 80 and send us the 20, but they don't hold it until the end of the, of the year. I talked to them yesterday. They told me that they will not send us any July 15th money until December unless we ask for it. I don't see the merit of that because it's basically just borrowing against the receipts that we're going to get in December. And I, we're not out of money yet. But, you know, I've asked them to give me a, to do a study if they can find the software because they said, you guys need to know if you, if you've collected your 80% too early too, at least for Long Beach. So we, if you, it's not too confusing. We're, you know, I, I want to know what's going to happen in, in December. And I just don't know that. The SETIT and seems to be coming in at exactly what it was. And Carl Sender confirmed that that will probably go on for the rest of the year. So we get about, we're going to get another, in the second half, we're going to get another 100,000 dollars from SETIT, which comes in monthly from the county. And we're going to get another 14,000 times six, 84,000 from Kadgett. And so we get a check every, or an ACH every, every month in that, in those categories. But I just don't know what's going to happen with the tax receipts. I just don't know how, how well.
You know, Bill, do we know where we sit relative to prior years in terms of initial deposit versus full year?
Yeah. I mean, I'm saying we're 90, we're 90% of what, I mean, we should be obviously 103% of what we did last year. And so 90% isn't, isn't as good as we'd like it to be. I'd like it to be, you know, I mean, we get, we get 103 to 104.5% of, of, you know, our max levy comes in. And so we get, you know, we, we levy for, based on the state's approval, they will allow us another 3 to 4%. But, you know, so we're, so 90% isn't as good as 104. So we're, you know, I was just, Burns Harbor only got 11% because the steel mills withheld the money until July 15th. If you ask any business, they, you know, they're always going to say, if you give them two months to pay, they're going to take the full two months. So, you know, there are other communities that have not done well with the tax receipts because of the, you know, and everybody, everybody was given a, what? A two-month forgiveness. So some people didn't pay their taxes in May.
But we got 90, we got 90% of what we expected in May, but in our typical year, does our first payment equal?
First payment is always, the first payment is always greater than the second because there are people who pay, you know, pay a whole year. And, and, you know, they don't pay in two payments. They just pay it all in once. You know, and today, you know, the, the interest on a thousand dollars in a savings account is less than a penny. So, you know, maybe there's some savings asset better than mine, but it's.
I think what we need to do is make sure, if it's critical to get this stuff done this year before winter, we need right away to make a decision and we need to make sure we have funds available. So Bill, we need, we need to find out what, what the terms are from these places. And estimate, my estimate would be between 500 and 750,000 dollars. I think we can come up with the rest here to, to work out the rest of this year. Next year won't be so, so damaging on our, on our resources. But we need, we need to be sure we can spend the money with Woodruff and get this. damaging on our, on our resources. But we need, we need to be sure we can spend the money with Woodruff and get this ready rock or whatever is in place. Everybody agree with that?
I think that's a priority. And again, I, I guess my, my thought is, is Stop 24 may have to wait. I, I, I don't want to see the town put into the same kind of financial situation City Chicago is in. I don't want to be compared to Mayor Daley. That's my, that's my feeling at this point.
Keep, keep in mind now, you, you keep knocking 245,000 around. It's really only 145 if you take the grant out.
Yeah.
Kevin, we need, we need to, we'll set something up where a couple of us can get together and go through the, through the budget items and identify how much we really have much, much more accurately than we have right now. But I'm, I'm confident we've got, we, we've got enough to cover all 24 community crossing grant and parts of 21 and 23, maybe a hundred to 200,000 of that. But there's 500 that, that might be a problem. Now, one final thing, I'm not anticipating that there are any costs coming through on sewers, right?
No costs, I understand. Yeah, that's all going to be financed. So the homeowners on Lake Shore Drive are paying the total cost of the, the town is guaranteeing it. But those costs come from the homeowners on Lake Shore Drive.
Okay. So then the second thing is that we have to put a clamp on expenses. We talked about it last time of, of not allowing any expenditures over a thousand dollars without approval for their approval. And I think we should look at that. And I think that should be in place. And Bill, you're the focal point for that.
Yeah, the, the one thing that I need, and this is not a negative, but because of the amount of work that we've had to do with the building department, you know, we're already, you know, our, our building department expenses are, were already over budget and we're only in August. And I don't anticipate stopping the kind of stuff that needs to be done by, by the commissioner and everything else. But it's, you know, the money that I budgeted, it, you know, was, is already, I get the, I get the red flag from, from the system saying you're over budget. So I don't know how, I mean, we can't not pay. So we gotta, that's something we're going to have to, we're just going to have to eat. But that's an expense that, you know, was going to be, you know, like $2,000 a month and it's already, you know, forty, five hundred dollars a month.
Right. The only saving thing that we've got, building permits that are up too, so, but not.
I, you know, there's other expense, I mean, other things that are coming in. It's just that, you know, some expenses that we've got, we can't, you know, we, we can't forego.
And I think, I think when we sit down, we'll be able to identify the pluses and the minuses.
Yeah.
That's definitely one. I mean, we've got certain things in the park department, I mean, that, that are pluses for us because we didn't have a park program this year. So we got maybe 25 or 40,000 dollars in there that we had budgeted that's not going to be spent. Seventy-five thousand as far as, well, no, not, about 35, 40,000 in the park.
One of, one of the things that, that, you know, I mentioned to you, Pete, that, that I did research that, that the park department in Michigan City, which gets a whole lot more money than we do, obviously, because of the size of their population. But they, what they do is they take the, the tax revenues that they have, not the, not the money that they've got, you know, in the, in, in the bank for the, for the park department, park and rec department, but they, they actually do tender that money to the, to the, to the general fund at the end of the year. So in other words, if they get a 1.3 million, they've got four million in the bank and they budget and they only spend 1.2 million. They send the 300,000 at the end of the year to the, the general fund. I don't know. I mean, I, I guess that's legal because they've been doing it for a while. The one thing we might ask is if they, if they've got money that they want to contribute to the, I don't know how that works with the council and the park department and everything else. They want to contribute to some of the paving. That would be a benefit because we, you know, they're still, you know, even though they've been fixing up the stops, which could be argued as a street department expense, they, you know, they still have money because the park, the park program is, is a wonderful thing, as everybody knows. But it's, it's never a moneymaker. And so the fact that they're not spending any money this year means those tax revenues that we received for them have not been spent. So they're, and I don't know whether that's something that, whether we, how we do that is we can talk to them about the fact that they want to contribute something to the, to the, to the Indot CCMG project.
Yeah, well, it's really, I mean, it's, it's going to be protecting their stops anyway. I mean,
Yeah.
Go to stop, go to Stop 21 or 23 for sure.
I never, they're, they're, you know, they step up, and I, I've been talking to Joy is in charge of the, Jerry Massey was in charge of it for the, the park department, but she's gone and Joy is now in charge of the, of the budgets. I just had some conversations with her yesterday. So you know, that's something that, that maybe is, we can discuss with them going forward.
We'll set something up with a few of us just to go line by line through the, through the July 31st budget or expenses. Identify what, where we have opportunities. Because we're still, we still have, you know, as of the end of July, we still got 1.9 million dollars in cash.
Yeah, we're, we're not, it's just that we've got a lot of stuff coming up and that, the Stop 21 and 23 are probably the most significant. I mean, we could, you know, we've been talking about Stop 24 for a while. And I think we've recognized that we have the budget for, you know, that we've, we, we want this Indot CCMG project because there's no, you know, there's, there's a tremendous benefit in getting a million. And even though we squeak it to 350,000 or whatever it's going to cost us, it's still a million and change worth of paving. So it's, it's.
Yep. Has there been any movement on the hydrant fees?
No, no. We do have, and I, you know, we, I just haven't pushed it because it's, we're not in a cash flow thing, but we, I, you know, the, the Water Board knows they've agreed to pay 26,000 dollars to the town and gratefully, but I think that's, it's agreed. And so that is another 26,000 dollars. And at this point in time, it's not chump change. So that's something we need to, you know, we will, we can, we can count on that money coming in also.
Okay.
The expense that I think we, we're going to have is legal expenses. The special BZA is becoming quite a quagmire, at least judging by all the requests for information from both aggrieved parties or both participating parties in that. You know, we, we now have two cases before the special BZA. So it's, that's not becoming less, it's becoming more.
Yeah, just as a side, Bob, that we also have, you know, I noticed that the last two months, the, the Braisi Nelson bill had been in the $5,000 range and now they're both, you know, 9,900, I think. You know, I don't, I'm sure it was not intentional, but it, just a Scotia under $10,000. So if a year, that's money that, you know, that we, we're going to have to pay and, and, and you know what you're saying, you know, and so Austin Keiper is going to be a big, bigger than 400 dollars that he paid last month.
Yeah.
So.
I think a lot of that legally.
But I don't know how we avoid those expenses. But I guess from Pete's point of view, we, we just have to identify them and say, we gotta. But I guess one thing I, I, I need to do is see
Lost Bill.
And with the Indiana Bond Bank, what kind of terms we can get for stop remediation and things like.
You're cutting in and out, Bill. No, I think he's gone completely. Oh, no, there he is.
He's muted now.
Yeah. Bill, unmute yourself.
Some of the legal, some of the recent legal fees have a little bit to do with the sewers too. He's been pretty busy on the sewer project.
That's true. Okay.
Yeah. All right, well, then I think we could, I don't know, it's not a meeting that needs to be, we, we, uh, needs to be identified in the, in the paper. But I think we need to get together with a small group, Pete and me and whoever else needs, wants to look at it. Do you have some time this week, Pete?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I've got a meeting this afternoon, but Thursday and Friday, we could get together, maybe try to figure out a time to.
Okay, we'll do it Thursday morning.
Okay. All right.
And we, we probably have to limit it to, to just the two of those. Otherwise I think we're, we're in violation of the open door law, right? Because there are five of us.
Yeah, if, if it's, if it's, yeah, if it's two council members and Pete and Bill and whoever else needs to be there. That's fine, yeah.
Can you guys let me know what time and all?
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, can, can we have three of us up in this committee in a meeting?
You know, I, that's something I, I'd have to call and find. It would seem to me that, that, I mean, if, I suppose if we open it to the public, the problem is if we're doing it tomorrow morning,
Yeah.
at an identified meeting that we can really, I think, I think it, it needs to only be two.
Yeah. Why don't you and Pete meet? I'll stay away. I don't, I don't want to get us in trouble.
Now, who's, who's, who, who would be there with you?
Look, John, John, John can attend because he's not an official member of the Budget Finance Committee. So I think the three of you, if the three of you want to meet, that'd be fine. But I think if I'm there, I think that's a problem.
Okay, that's fine. Well, yeah. All right, we'll just pick a time and we're, we're going to do it tomorrow. We can do it tomorrow morning. What, 10 o'clock, nine o'clock? Hello? Yeah, meet in the council room at 10 o'clock then.
10 o'clock tomorrow.
All right, and then see. And I'll, I'll try to take some time and see if I can find. I, I really want to know whether, you know, whether, whether we can finance things. I mean, buildings are easy, but I, you know, I just don't, I, I don't know whether, whether remediation is, you can do that. I mean, the bond you can do, but not a, but, I, I, you know, I'm just not sure if we could do, if we could do stop remediation for 20 years. You know, because they, they want to know that they're going to get repaid. And.
One of the issues I want to remind everybody, our timeframe is extremely tight on getting this done before the winter. We're going to probably have to bid this out and that, those timeframes are significant. We've got some engineering going on behind the scenes right now. We've got some permit process going on behind the scenes. But the actual timeline to get the thing done, if we don't have some decisions made and some financing or however we plan on paying for it and have some, the bid process started by, etc. Then, then we'll be, essentially we'll be forced to go back to throwing whatever and yet that isn't in terms of a temporary situation. But I think we just diagnosed another fact that this clock is ticking pretty loudly.
I, I'm still concerned as a sewer project, you know, even though it's not costing the town any money if we, you know, I mean, although we have to, we're guaranteeing that, but Sender seems to say that there's going to be money put in. There's going to be a 25% in the bank. So we'd be able to pay the, you know, pay the, the bank for the, that. I, I, they, they were still talking about starting in October. I don't see that as happening. But I don't know how you start in October unless, unless we fly in the, the, you know, the equipment that needs to go on Lake Shore Drive to fix, to fix the stop. So that's got to be something that, that has to be put off then, right? I mean.
They can do sewer work in the wintertime from a, from a logistical standpoint. The stop remediation work will be a little bit dependent on the material supply. So once we actually get to the point where we're bidding, we can get some information about how quick we can get that work done. I, I've been under the impression from talking to Larry and Woodruff that it's probably still doable between now and the winter. But again, we can't wait too much longer. But the sewer project, I'm with you, Bill. I mean, I think we can, we can control that a little bit. If we say that the remediation work's going to go in November and the sewer guys are lined up and ready to go, they can probably drop in right behind us and get going in the wintertime.
Okay, well, that's somebody else's job, I guess. I, it just seems, it seems like we're, we're pushing everything. Besides the, the financing side, there are also the, the engineering logistics side seems to me to be a little, a little tight. But, you know, that's, that's something that we, that's we can work on. All right. Well, I, you know, I think those are, is that we're, you know, I, I can't give you any more detail on, on what our finances are, are going to be or how bad it's going to be in, in terms of the tax receipts until, until we, and, you know, and do we actually get close to the collecting the money? And I, unless somebody tells me differently, I don't see any merit. I talked to them yesterday and I guess some of the, some of the cities are, are approaching and towns are approaching La Porte County and asking for a draw on their, on their funds. But I don't, I don't see whether that, I mean, that's money that, that, that we don't necessarily have. It's just money that they're going to send us. And we don't really have a cash flow problem right now. So my sense is unless the committee thinks we should be asking for a draw, I don't see the merit to that.
I, I don't think we need it.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Okay, I, I think we've covered the major things unless somebody has something.
Yeah, okay. Then let's, let's recono.
Do we want to make a recommendation to the town council? Because the town council is going to be having a special meeting on Monday. And one of the agenda items is to determine whether or not to proceed with Stop 24. Do we as a committee want to make a recommendation to them?
Well, I, I, no, I, I think our, our charge is to find money for something that's been budgeted. If they want to stop that, that's fine. But I, I think we can do it. I, I think we can do all these things. I mean, we've financed stuff in the past and we were paying 130, we used to be paying 130,000 dollars a year for the town hall. And that's gone. We've got 2 million dollars in the bank. Next year is going to be, I'm, I'm the optimist, but next year is going to be a, a better year than this year. We won't have as many things. We, we've just got to get over the short term hump as far as I'm concerned.
Bill, can we find out before that special town council meeting about the possibility of a loan for the?
I, I will, I will, I'll be on the horn with the Indiana Bond Bank and with Horizon Bank before that. And so I think that's, that's the, the recommendation. I, I'm not as, I'm not as fond as of the Stop 24, not, not because I, I don't appreciate all the work that's been done. But I just think that's an expense, even though we're going to get a hundred thousand dollars back. And, and so we can, if we can do it, I guess it's okay. But it, it just seems like because the stuff is so much more immediate, the remediation and the paving and, 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 you know, even, even the, even the fire stuff. So, but anyway, that's, that's, that's an opinion because I, because I'm, I'm nervous about the numbers, but, but. But, but, but if we can do them all, that's fine. I agree with, with what Pete said is true. We don't have anything big coming up next year. So, so, uh, and I think we're just going to have to skip. I think we've all agreed that, that maybe this, this paving thing, we can't, you know, as, as good as it is, Carl Sender has said, we can't keep doing this every year. We just don't have the money. Okay.
Good deal.
I'm done. I'll, I'll research.
Good. All right, tomorrow at 10?
Tomorrow at 10.
So I'm done.
All right.
Good deal. All right, everybody. Have a good day.
All right, thank you.